And thank you for allowing opportunity to express my opinions on the intrusion of this glorious warehouse into our residential community. I am thankful that as of yesterday morning, that the three porter toilets that stared me in the face when I looked out my front window or door has been removed after nine months. The project seems near completion. That may end it for you, but not for those of us across the road. I'm thankful for the small shrubbery that's been put in place, but without water and care will not live and grow, as has been the results of those dead trees we view coming up 10th Street and lack of care in some places on Kia Boulevard. And it boggles my mind why those crape myrtles were dug up on Kia Boulevard. I read across a letter dated May oh seven to express my current concerns about what might be going directly in front of our home if any actions and rezoning was approved. I've given you a copy of this letter, which obviously was totally ignored. And the fact that no sign posted when they were going to rezone, giving us the opportunity at that time to make an appeal. I still submit my objections and ask on what basis could you approve the annexation and rezoning of this property in a residential area? Keep in mind, there were other properties that this could have gone on without intruding into a residential area. Our home was recognized for recommendation for the National Register of Historic Perseverance, along with four historic outbuildings. Ten years ago, before moving into this home inherited from our parents, we put hard work into this place to keep its character and yet make it attractive, comfortable place for us to spend our last years. This is a rural residential area, which now have huge trucks running up one right after the other, speeding down the road. And I ask you once again, how would you like this project directly across from your home? I, as before, knowing that what I say doesn't help my situation, but I pray that your conscience be pricked by the Supreme Judge of the universe, and you will not allow this evil to be done to someone else. Yes, we are living in a time, as Isaiah states in chapter five, verse 20, that those will call evil good, and good will be called evil. When a government, be it a county, a city, a federal government, does not stand for first and foremost for its citizens, it has become evil. So your project is complete, and I'm left with trash thrown or blowing on my property clear to the back. My driveway is like a cracked egg by the large machinery vibrations, noise of traffic, large trucks, bright lights shining from the warehouse into my bedroom and house at night time, and an unpleasant view of an ugly warehouse in a residential neighborhood compared to the peaceful pasture scene we had this time last year. Plus, I understand that our taxes are increased. It is only through my trust in the Lord that I can continue to live there in peace, knowing that no weapon formed against me were prospered. I appreciate those of you who do care and others in our community that have expressed to me of just how inconsiderate this was toward our community. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Next, we have the presenter Chase, Le Pointe University. Is he here?
I tried to call text them a few minutes ago.
Okay.
Mayor Tramell.
Yes.
I gotta say something while we wait.
Go ahead.
I just want to thank Mrs. Sales for coming and for continuing to keep the issue that you speak on so eloquently in the forefront of our minds. I'm sure that there are other people who share your sentiment, and I certainly appreciate the position that you're coming from. So thank you for being here. Thank you for making this attempt to be heard.
Ms. Mayor?
No.
Okay. All right. So we will not have the presentation this evening. We'll move on to new business. And first, we have the city manager update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Got a few items for you to catch up on and a lot of projects going on. Sorry for our guests can't see our screen with photos because we're, both of our screens aren't working right. And I'm gonna go through the projects and talk about each one. The photo that you see on the screen now is of a project that's out on Third Avenue in front, right there in front of the depot or at the optical building. This was last week. Since then, they finished this curb and gutter and have paved some of the sidewalk as well. This will go all the way down to the bank on, which would be the west side, I mean the east side. And in the west side, they'll start at the state line there as well and go all the way down to the West Star Building and replace all that sidewalk. Then moving to 29 or 18 and going all the way down to Kia Boulevard on that side. Project we talked about numerous times. Pemont Pavings doing the work. They appear to be doing a very good job, as you can see. They've got a good crew there, and the concrete work looks good, and we're relatively pleased with that project to this point. Sixth Avenue Playground, this particular photo doesn't show the benches and trash cans that were installed yesterday, but this project is complete, has a handicap access as well. The only thing that we lack in the park is pouring the concrete sidewalk between the existing sidewalk and the playground itself. So also, we added to the walking track area over there, so the loop around through the pine trees there is all concrete, as well as that sidewalk goes from the street all the way up to the playground. And there's a loop around the pavilion, the existing pavilion that was already there. So all that's been done and finished. In the city park, we've got a new sidewalk there. You can see that that extends through John Hogsfield and goes down the parking lot down by the softball field that connects to the lower parking lot down there. And then we have completed the asphalt paving of the walking trail that's around the small ball fields, the three ball fields that are next to the river. So that trail is now paved and already a lot of residents walking on that trail. It's been gravel for several years. Instead of having to put base down, we continued putting gravel and then did the asphalt paving on it. So that's a nice amenity in the recreation area. We've completed our 2022 resurfacing for the general fund projects, and that was Airhead Drive, a portion of Highland Drive, and all Bridgewood Drive. So those three projects have been done. And that was done by Southeast Pavings, and that was about a $220,000 project again, which was our total budget out of the general fund for paving this year. So just other projects that we're working on. The 2022 Sphloss Paving Project, again, we've been talking about this project for a year. And we've been in contact with the engineer, and they said that they think it's a good time to go ahead and bid the project. So we're looking for the bid documents this week, and we'll get that project out to bid and see if we can get a good price on that, even though fuel prices are up. I think we need to go ahead and push it forward and see what we can do. We've got about a million dollars to spend on that project. So hopefully, we'll get some good bidders and a good price and get that moving forward. The sidewalk in front of City Hall, the landing area all the way up to the front doors, we'll be replacing that starting next Monday. So the front entrance will be closed, but we'll have the stairwell open so bill payers can come in that way. They can still use the drop box. If somebody needs to come in upstairs for an issue and their handicapper have an issue with coming up the stairs, they can call us, and we're gonna post everything and make sure we get the word out on that, starting tomorrow about that closure up front. We have had some experience doing that during COVID. Really worked out fine. I think we're able to serve all the customers and really didn't have any issues with that. The school renaming, we have submitted all that information to the county, Tree County School Board. They have, from my understanding, that's not been on the agenda yet. They're still working through that process. They've got the information. I suppose at some point, they're gonna put that on there whenever it comes up in the rotation for their agenda. But right now, no date for it to be on there, but they do have it, and they are working towards that.
Would they let us know when it's on the agenda?
I don't know that they will. We try to watch the agenda as they post them online to see when it's gonna be. If we see it, we'll circle that out. On the residential development front, we've been having a lot of interest from projects. There's some properties that are being looked at for development, some properties that we annexed in and rezoned years ago that are in the process of having contracts put on those and changing hands to new developers that have builders that are eager to get started building. So residential side is looking better all the time. The Harris Creek Project, the second phase of that is complete, built out. All houses are sold. They're grading on the third phase now. So that's another a little over 100 additional single-family attached units in that development. They submitted their plans, and so we're moving forward with that project.
Ed.
Yes, ma'am.
Why is you on the Harris Creek? Can I just say something?
Sure.
A couple of days ago, I was walking in the Harris Creek area. So I was walking over in the new development park, and now they have a lot of kids over there. I mean, it's a lot of kids. And just out walking, I met one of the new neighbors that's in the new area, and they have kids. And she wanted me to ask you, or the city, or the city council, she just said, "Ask the city," if you could put up signs that "Children at Play" or something to let them know that now there's a lot of children riding bikes, and the cars should speed through there now. She said they come, when they come, they just come real fast, and there's not really any stop signs in that new area, and there's nothing to indicate there's a lot of kids. And there is a lot of kids in that area now riding bikes and just out because it's warm.
Sure, we can put some "Children at Play" signs up. The water intake project that we discussed and committed the ARPA funding to, we did not get funded in the first round of the funding for that. From my understanding, there'll be another round of funding this year. So hopefully, we will be funded. It was $250 million in the first round of funding. So I still think there was strong application, and so that we don't have to reapply. You know, it's kind of, the state's kind of making up rules as they go on these funding programs because they've got, you know, so much money to spend, and I think they're just figuring out a way to get through it. So they really didn't announce publicly the awards. They just did it through the governor's press release. And if you didn't see the governor's press release, you didn't know if you got awarded or not. But as the word got out that different communities had gotten funded, we realized that we had not. So we'll stay hopeful on that funding and that project. Our economic development director position's been advertised. April 3rd is the final day on that, so we'll start the process of vetting the candidates that applied and worked through that process. And last item, I've been working with DOT on the additional recreation signs that we talked about with John Hogsfield. And as soon as we can get the design on those, we'll get those ordered and install on the right way out there. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Any other questions, comments? Counselor?
I have one. Ed, do you have any conversation with the people at Harris Creek Development about the owners of the property? You said that they are sold out. That's great news. I'm always interested in whether it's primarily investors that are purchasing these homes or if it's local residents, which that's great if people are grading. But it would be also great if we were attracting new people to the community, increasing our rooftops with larger population. Because so much of what we need to do will be a lot easier to accomplish if we were a town of a little more than 3,800. Do you have any way of knowing, do you have any conversations with them about that?
Most of those residents in that new area in Harris Creek are from other places. I don't think there's anybody there that was from West Point or from the valley. Most of them that I met are from Columbus at different places, some from Atlanta, but I don't think there's anybody local that's out there. But I think there's a lot of, I know there's a lot of new children, so they're not children that was there before, and they're not children that attended West Point. They're going to, I mean Harris County, I guess, because that's where they thought they had to go. But I don't think there's a lot of local activity. All those folks come from different places.
I was not really referring to the people who are already there.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought.
That's okay. He said that it's already pre-sold, I think, right? All of the...
Well, but these individuals are buying. I mean, many times before they poured the slab, you know, they had a contract on them.
So they are individuals, they're not investors?
Yeah.
And I guess it could be individuals who are investors, so...
Sure, sure. Everybody wants to invest in their property, or at least they feel.
In a market like ours, it's prime for investors.
I'm sorry, I just misunderstood what you said.
No problem.
I thought you was talking about the people that moved in out there. I'm sorry.
Great, I'm glad to hear we've got some new families.
Anything else? All right. Next item on our agenda is the council meeting rules of decorum and debate. And this was sent out in your packet a week or so ago, so I'll open it up for council discussion. Who would like? Do what? Too small a tick?
While we're waiting for people to catch up with reading it, I'd like to just ask, why do we need it? Who wrote it? I know that, as I told, we don't use Robert's Rules of Order, as most official meetings are governed by. I think that, you know, I guess my first thought was freedom of speech. Now, obviously, I'm not gonna argue that decency and decorum are not important. Obviously, they are. And, you know, we had that expectation of everybody, whether we're in a meeting or not. But I guess those were the first things that came to mind. We've gone from three meetings to two meetings just recently this year. We have canceled a number of meetings, sometimes for good reason, obviously. But when I hear we don't have any business, I think about a lot of things that we don't have anything specific, the things that we probably ought to...
Can you turn the mic off?
My mic is not on.
No.
Okay. Let me start over, because I want to be heard. I was about, I was saying that we are, I'm interested in the genesis of this recommendation in that, do we need it, is my first question. As I read through it, freedom of speech came to my mind, First Amendment. Obviously, you can't just say anything you want to say and however you want to say it at any time. There are some parameters around that, but it's a basic concern of most people when there's a feeling that transparency is being affected, that there's an attempt to not let everyone be heard, all opinions be heard. I think on the council, it's not, if you have juxtaposed ubiquitous opinions, it doesn't necessarily mean that anyone is wrong. I think there's always gonna be somebody in the community that may be able to relate to that one person that may not speak the same opinion as the majority. And in general, I'm concerned about putting a muzzle on people, whether it's staff, whether it's citizens who come and speak their opinion about issues, or whether it's elected officials. I think sometimes it's an attempt to control the narrative. But again, you know, we all have our opinions. We need to feel free to voice them. Decency and decorum is an expectation. I don't think anybody would disagree that you should allow meetings to get out of control. There are some things we can do to be better prepared in the way we handle situations if there is a disruption. I think short of someone may have an opinion that that's not what I agree with, so that person's out of order. So in that these rules are not yet in order, I would certainly hope that if somebody says something that I want to follow up on, I'll be allowed to do that. One other concern is the record-keeping of that and somebody watching the clock to say three, if three minutes is up, or someone speaking and thinking, "Oh, let me hurry up and say what I need to say before my three minutes are up and time is called on me." Having said all of that, we can't let meetings go on and on and on. We don't want to be here till midnight. We don't want to be here till 10 o'clock. We don't want to be here till 9 o'clock. So we all appreciate that, but we don't have committees. We have reduced our meeting time. A lot of work goes into things like this that I guess staff does before there's any input from the council. If we had committees, I guess we would kind of come out of a committee before we go to this. So my question, you know, a burning question is, whose idea was it and who wrote it? And the biggest question of all is, why do we think we need it?
This was prepared by staff for us. So this is, my understanding was taken from what other city councils do, my understanding. These are things that are taken from other cities' council meetings, so we're just kind of copying what some other cities do.
Mayor, council?
Yeah, in fact, I was gonna, first of all, welcome you, because I know this is your first in-person meeting, and also knowing that you just attended your newly-elected...
That's right.
...training and actually had a class on this, which I think probably where you're chiming in right now.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So there's open meetings and closed meetings, and those are the two things that we have to live by in the state of Georgia. While I was being trained in Athens, we talked about successful meetings and what makes stuff flow well. And when you have, I guess, this doesn't just, if you want to say handicap one person, this handicaps, I guess, us all, or makes us, gives us all a level playing field. When you have only a certain amount of time to get your point across, to allow other people to have the opportunity to speak is probably, is a benefit to the overall success of the meeting. It also will make us all get a little more prepared when we come into these meetings and having some answers to some of the stuff that's on the agenda, so we know what points we want to bring up at, you know, when we walk in here. I think that's, I think that's a good thing, too. I'm, I like this idea. I think having three minutes to get my point across is probably adequate. And then you also have a three-minute rebuttal time that you have after that if you disagree with one of the council people that are up here. I'm not a, this is brand new to me, as y'all know, and I've never been on a debate team, but when I was up there on the, doing the, when we got invited to go to La Grange, and I was up there, they had me on a timer, and I didn't like it, but that was the rules that we had to live by, so I got, so I got used to it. So anyway, that is a good point you bring up. How do we, how do we track? Have I been talking for three minutes? Maybe. So, I don't know, is there, is there a clock that we gotta hit like you play chess? Your turn. I don't know. I guess that's gotta be worked out, but anyway.
I think that's one way to do it, certainly, and we do that in a number of situations. I guess one is with our citizens that come. It's five minutes, and I think Kristen maybe is the time people run that. Or maybe the mayor is.
I do it.
I'm not sure. But anyway, somebody has to, somebody pays attention to that. I've attended that same training that you attended in Athens. I don't know whether it was the same presenters, but I'm well aware that sometimes, you know, groups feel that they need that. Sometimes they really need it because they've had people come to fisticuffs in meetings and people that get in your face, you know, and be intimidating, you know, in a way that you feel like you gotta go a little bit beyond what's normal, what is expected of everybody. But at the same time, I don't know of a situation here where we had dealt with that. And that may be opinion, but again, I don't think we've had any situations where we had to ask people to leave, call in the law enforcement or whatever, which is all in there. And to me, that's just a given. If things get to that point, that's, you're gonna do that, you know? If you get somebody that's so unruly in a meeting, you're gonna ask them to leave, and it doesn't have to be scripted to that extent. Preparedness, certainly. We all need to be prepared when we come to the meetings. And then finally, people feeling that they don't have an opportunity to express themselves. When I first came on this council, I would sit back and not say anything, thinking, "I'm a freshman, I'm a new kid on the block," kind of like what you just mentioned, this is your first meeting. I would wait, wait. Nobody said much. I would chime in. Being the new person, I had a lot to say because I hadn't been here for that many years. I hadn't said it, and I've got opinions that I want to express. It evolved to a situation where people did speak up. And again, I would sit in ways. People would speak up, and that's great. It shouldn't be a conversation of one or two. It should be all of us having dialogue and interaction about whatever the concerns of the city are. So if at any time, you know, I volunteer right now to just reserve, come in and tell everybody to say what they want to say. I don't want anybody to feel like they can't be heard. And I think it's kind of a threat to democracy, it's a threat to basic rights, it's a threat to the success of our city when we start down this path. I think it's a slippery slope. Has it been done, but is it done in a lot of cities? Yes. But the training is very, very good in a lot of ways, and what I took from it was not the same thing that you took from it. I respectfully say that.
Listen, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
This, I, I had requested this, or at least talked to Ed and some of the other council members. I know, um, that we, and Ed and I got to discussing it and exploring it. And if I say something wrong, Ed, correct me, but, um, I think Ed found some communications from Mayor Head and Mayor Ferguson where things like this had been discussed, rules for speaking on a council had been discussed. I think that that, that this provides a framework for democracy to work. I think this is a way for people to be heard. We're all elected here, we're all equally important, or unimportant, if you will. Uh, we're all servants of the people, and I think everybody needs to be heard. And I don't think that it's harmful at all. I think it's beneficial to have a framework where people can exchange ideas and be limited. I think it keeps us from being repetitive and off the subject. If I get off the subject, call me out, get me back to the subject. If we, if we as a council get off the subject, we need to be called back. And I think it gives us a framework to do that and to focus our discussion and to get something done.
And I think if, if I get off the subject, call me back, call me out. And I will either explain how I feel like it is on subject, or I'll have to adhere. DeeDee, get back on task, on, on subject. Have you ever, yes, and have you ever, decency? Decorum? Um, have you ever felt limited in what you could say? I've never noticed that you felt like you couldn't say what you wanted to say in these meetings. Have you?
Sometimes.
Sometimes? Because?
It's not so long.
Okay, alright. So, anytime a meeting goes long, my opinion is I need to get up and leave if I can't stay. Um, I don't want to leave, but, you know, if it goes longer than an hour, most meetings you think y'all are able to do in an hour. But if it goes longer than an hour, there are exceptions, so if it goes longer, you made other plans. I don't think anybody will hold that against you. Um, Sandra, have you felt like you don't get to say what you want to say?
Well, when I read the part about interrupting, sometime I, I feel like I'm interrupting. Uh, it's kind of like, I have felt like, um, you know how you do jump rope and you're doing this, and all of a sudden you just jump in? Because one person would just be going on and on and on. And I guess the answer would be yes. But then we've, I've heard people say that we don't, we sit here and we don't say anything. Well, sometime you can. Some, sometimes you don't want to interrupt, and you don't want to be rude, so you can't get it in.
Right, and you
And that has happened a few, few times, and so I guess the answer would be yes. But I mean, why are you just asking me?
I'm asking, I'm gonna ask everybody, but let, but let me respond at this point. Um, no, but I No, but I am a council member, and I think this is for, for open discussion, isn't it? And I don't think we have instituted a three-minute limit yet.
Nor have we, but you're in charge.
I, I'm not feeling like I'm in charge. Mayor Tremel?
Yes.
Do you have a problem with my continuing?
Do I have a problem with your continuing right now?
To talk, talk about
No, I think we need to get this all, I think we all need to say everything we need to say tonight and, um, and go ahead and get this, this hammered out, so that we, we are on, are all on the same page, so that everyone feels like they've had an opportunity to speak. That the conversation is not nomin, not dominated by you, or by you, or by you, or any one council member. That they all equally get to spend, that's my, that, that would be my contention with this, that, that I, that it, it always seems like that there's one person predominantly speaking the entire time. So, I'd like to see that be even, because I don't get enough input, I feel like, a lot of the time. And I want input. Ultimately, you guys are making the decisions here, I'm only breaking the tie. But I want there to be so that everybody has an opportunity to, to, to say their part. So, y'all need to come up with a, a good rules of decorum here to do that. Is that what you want to hear from me?
I, I did want to hear you say that I could continue to
No, I'm, yeah, I thought I was clear about that. I want us to go ahead and, you know, if we're gonna be here to midnight tonight, I'd like us to get this one hammered out. So, it won't take that long, I'm just kidding.
I don't think it's
Yeah, but I think, I think we need to get everybody feeling like they're equally heard from on this council.
Alright, and so to follow up, Sandra, on your comment again, because I'm all about clearing the air, the, you know, the intermittent remarks that, you know, you can kind of read into whatever you want to read into it. Um, I'm just, I'm for transparency, and I'm for just saying what we mean. Um, so I just want to clarify.
But so am I, so am I.
Right. Sometimes you go like, you gotta jump in, you get jumped in, or you don't have a chance to say whatever
And that's rude, and I don't want to be rude to anybody.
But when, have you never had an opportunity to
I just jump in.
Okay, right.
But I shouldn't do that.
Have you ever had an opportunity, or, I mean, have you ever not had the opportunity to interject what you want to say?
Because I don't want to be rude.
Well, and I want to interject right here, too, because that's, I think that's what we're trying to get here. We don't, I, I don't want this council working to where, you know, Gloria has to interrupt Sandra, and Sandra has to interrupt DeeDee, and Joel has to interrupt, you know, we don't want that. You need to have a time, we need to have a time, say our piece, and move on, and then hear from Gloria. And then move on, hear from Joel, hear from Sandra. That's, I think that's the goal here, is for that to happen. And, um,
Well, I'm not coming on any particular council member of, or anybody, the manager, or clerk, or anybody. But sometime if a person go on and on, and this is my, this is for me. If a person is speaking on something and they go on and on and on, sometime I have a question, but by the time that person go on and on and on, I forget my question, I forget what I'm gonna say, I forget what I'm gonna ask, and that's not thinking, I'm saying. I mean, you kind of lose track of what you're If you go on and on and get into something else, and you're off of this subject, you went to another subject. So, it kind of, um, it comes to me often a little bit, I'll just be honest. And I forget what I'm gonna say, and I just don't say anything. So, that's, I mean, that's my opinion.
I have to write it down, Gloria.
I have it in my mind when I get here. Don't have it written down. And the other thing, the three minutes, I mean, three minutes, five minutes, ever how many minutes. I mean, I just don't think it should take ten or fifteen minutes to discuss one issue. You know, if you have to talk fast, then talk fast. Three minutes is a long time. And most time when you go to a funeral, you only get two minutes, and you have a lot to say. But, um, to me, three minutes is a long time to speak. And I can understand sometime you may go over just a little bit, you may have to say, wait a minute, Mr. Mayor, I had just two other sentences, and just go over a little bit. And not just you, I mean, I'm talking to everybody. Um, so to me, three minutes is a long time to spend on one thing. Because now, I mean, I guess I've been talking for maybe a minute or two, and it seems like I've been talking forever. So, that's just, to me, three minutes is a long time to speak.
A lot of times, I, I, I'll call Ed, or Kristen, or Richard, and they answer my question before the meeting, so I, so that I don't have to go on and on and on. I get an answer before I get here. So, that helps, that helps me.
Some things that is appropriate on for me, but not everything. And, um, you know, sometimes the public, I feel, deserves to hear Ed's response, or whoever's response. Um, I right now, it's, it's, it's just started talking. I dropped down. I, I can relate to what you're saying. I forget, what, what, what was it that he said that I wanted to say something about? If I don't. I mean, you know, you can't remember, or, and it's not just in this kind of meeting that you have that problem. So, and I don't know that that, and then three minutes is a long time. Some things you need more than three minutes. Some things you don't need any minutes. Some things in two, ten seconds, you're gonna say all you want to say, and we're gonna move on. I think the bottom line is, we all have a difference of opinion on how much time we, we will put into doing this job, um, or this service, if I'm corrected on that. Um, and I might be willing to spend every day of the week calling Ed, asking him about something, um, and Gloria may not be. So, you know, we have to do what works for, for us. The bottom line is, I think we're all here for the same, uh, reason. We want to see West Point prosper, we want to see West Point grow, or hope, and, um, be successful. And Joel, um, I didn't get to you yet. Have you, you haven't been in meetings for very long, but have you so far felt like you couldn't say what you wanted to say?
Sometimes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it was because of domination of conversation?
Yes, ma'am. Um, I liked, I, I didn't know how this, this was supposed to work, okay? When I, when I attended on the two Zoom meetings, or three that we've, four that we've had, however many there are, it's, it was like a free-for-all of whoever wanted to speak. And I joined right in, I, you know, I would say what I wanted to say, too. And having a procedural way to debate topics and ask for permission to speak before, Joe, you did it every time. He said, "Mr. Mayor, can I do this?" And I was, "Oh." And then I saw it in action at the, at the training seminar, that that's the way that, that, that the city governments around the state of Georgia run. They say, "Mr. Mayor, can I speak?" And he says, "Sure." And, and then they go ahead and said, said their piece. And I, and when I saw that, I said, "We, that, that's good." So, I, I do agree with the limited amount of time and also getting permission to, to, to speak, to bring your points up. Because Steve's gonna be fair, or whoever is sitting in the mayor's seat is gonna be fair, and ask everybody, when you got something to say, what you got.
And I'm, I don't think anything I said took exception to addressing the mayor to speak. But all, there is something to be said for spontaneity in terms of just a quick follow-up, um, after the dialogue has started, and we've already seen that here tonight, when Ed was giving his report. And it wasn't asked, you know, may have, every time, you know, it may or may not be necessary, or it may or may not be frowned upon.
That, that probably needs to be addressed and decided whether or not we want to do that or not.
Right, but again, this, my point is, I'm not taking exception to everything in this document. But, uh, the spirit of it seems to be overwhelming, in my opinion. That's what I wanted to say from the beginning. Um, and I will end by saying, if anyone is ever feeling like I'm stifling their ability to, or their opportunity to speak their opinion about anything we're discussing up here, please say, "Councilperson DeeDee Williams, I'd like to speak." And then Mayor will, I'm sure, say, "Please, DeeDee, let them speak." Um, I'm, I'm not in any way trying to
But we shouldn't have to ask you permission to speak.
No, no, it should be, and we got it here, a council member may call for a point of order.
Okay, well, that's the same thing. I think Joe, Joe brought that in.
Yeah.
We had some legislators, congressional chairs, or something, who do learn that, right?
So, how would this work? I mean, will a time be set, and then who would monitor the timer and
It's up to us.
tell the person? So, how would we set it up? I mean, we're gonna vote on it tonight, you need to know.
We're not, we're not voting tonight, we're not.
Oh, okay.
We're not going to, we're gonna decide, we're gonna, we're gonna, we will decide at the end of the discussion if we want to have more discussion about this or carry it on to our next, our next meeting, which we will vote. In fact, it'd be the only item on the agenda to vote for in our next meeting.
The next thing is to decide how it's going to
Yeah, if you want, if we want to keep a time and, um, you know. Phew, I don't want to keep a timer. Um, but we can, and, and, you know, and that could be further discussion, maybe. I hate to put this off, but, um,
There's, there are electronic timers out there for meeting purposes like that, that can, that can be used, and we can, we can bring in a staff person to keep time, and that would be their only job. That, that would, I mean, that'd probably make it the most accurate.
Is there an electric stimulus associated with this?
I'll let the attorney answer that.
I would advise against that. Answer that question.
I will take that comment in the category of decency.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, I would hope that something like this would encourage everybody to be concise in their comments, and let everybody else know that, hey, I've got my three minutes, and I'm gonna use it, unless you're getting your questions answered by the comments and questions going on preceding yourself. Um, because I, I would like to see more input, like I say, from the entire council on, on any matter we got in front of us. Um, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I could
Yes, go ahead.
on, on that particular issue.
Yeah.
Sandra Stone had mentioned calling me and, and having discussions about items. That, that's not for me, that's for me to give you information for you to either agree with or disagree with, so that you can use that in the meeting. Uh, it's not that it's my idea, or it's the way it's supposed to be done. Um, again, my, my, as part of my job description is to advise the council. Um, that's part of my job. So, if, if, if council members want to call me, have a discussion about an item, that is only for you to take that information and to apply it, however you'd like to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Tremel, may I speak?
You may, we're getting there, how about that?
Go ahead.
May I ask, uh, ask our attorney the question?
Yes.
Okay, alright. At one point, you, you said that Robert's Rules of Order is not what we use to conduct our meetings, and, um, that, and there are some rules of meaning in our charter. And I just wondered if these, um, guidelines are reflective of what our charter says we will do in conducting meetings, or if, uh, we're gonna replace, we're gonna amend charter to put this in it? Or, um, how does, have we even thought about that?
I have, and I, uh, Mr. Moon sent these proposed, this draft of these rules to me last week. I've probably got them roughly the same time the council got them, I, I guess. Um, there, there is no specific Rules of Order, Robert's Rules of Order, anything like that specifically referenced in the city charter. There are no, it has some very basic rules, there's just one provision about the meetings. And I've been sitting here looking at it while we've been talking tonight.
Yeah, when I, when I had, uh, when I asked about revising or reviewing the charter at large, um, and one of my concerns was, we don't follow Robert's Rules of Order all the time. And you corrected me at that point that we don't, that's not what we say we're gonna do. We used to have our rules in our charter that we go by. And I, I remember, I hadn't referred to them since I read this, but what I remember about them is they were not real, uh, it wasn't all-inclusive of what, um, Robert's Rules cover. And it's kind of loosely written, um, that's why I'm, I'm just curious as to what we're gonna follow. Are we gonna change charter, or are we going to add these to what's in there? Um, and we like to refer to, well, this, if it's something that we like in the charter, it's like, well, this is what our charter says. This is the way we do this, because the charter says that. And then on some other things, is we totally disregard what's in the charter.
Well, I'm not sure what you mean by what we do when we totally disregard the charter. You have to ask me specific information. I'm, I'm not, I'm certainly not aware of anything that the city does procedurally or substanti, substantively to disregard the charter. With that being said
With regard to this, I'm just saying
Well, I don't think the charter, I don't think the charter specifically addresses this, or any, or anything similar to this, or specific rules being followed. I think it's, it's silent largely on that issue. And, and I think it's left up to the council, whether you adopt rules like this, or if you adopt Robert Rules, Robert's Rules of Order, or some different set of rules, or no rules. I think it's completely up to the council.
And so what we offer
I, I don't think this proposal is contradictory to the coun, to the charter.
To the charter. So, what, what we're proposing, basically, we don't do, have anything in the charter that addresses this, is what you're saying?
Correct.
I thought, I thought when I asked about Robert's Rules of Order sometime ago, that was the response I got.
But, no, that, that's correct. We don't follow Robert's Rules of Order. It's not referenced anywhere in the charter or the code that I do have. And I think that's the point of this request, to have some sort of rules to follow.
Yeah, yeah. The response was, we don't follow Robert's Rules of Order. There are rules of meaning that we follow in our charter.
And they are very, very limited and very general. There's one provision that essentially addresses it. And it's, I mean, it doesn't address anything specifically that's dealt with in this proposal.
And this is why, this bears out my point of, you said something, I said something. You said something else that led me to believe that you really misunderstood something I said or didn't get everything I was trying to convey. So I clarified it and I said something else. And so just the spontaneity of responding to your question, my question, your question, that's just a normal thing in my opinion in a meeting. But-
But we're going to get back to the subject.
Well, what I'm doing is y'all are talking and listening and also going through this paragraph by paragraph. And some of this, you know, we've been having such a crazy meeting scenario for the last almost two years with COVID and all this online horrible. Can't tell you how much of a pain it was doing the things we had to do up here and some of y'all calling in and holding the phone up to the camp, you know, and people that came in for public comment and trying to film them. Hope we don't ever have virtual meetings again. But we've really gotten off track a lot on the way we do things. So I think this is very timely too, that we're doing some of these things. Because for me, I have some difficulty in running this meeting. And I like, first of all, it talks about the time limits. And we've talked a lot about the time limits and I'm sure we will a little bit more here and decide how we want to handle that. But it addresses initially that the council members should request, especially if we have two council members that want to speak on something. And that falls on me to decide. You've got both your hands up, want to talk or both, "Mr. Mayor, I'd like to speak." At the same time, I've got to make that decision on who's going to talk. And this goes also to the voting. When we get to a meeting and we got five or six items to vote on. When we were virtual, we were just taking motions on who wants to. In the past, I had said, "You take the first item, you take the second item, you take the third item." I've done it to where, who wants this item, who wants that item? And there's always the time when somebody wants some particular, you know, one or there's one everybody wants to make the motion to name the school for Zelma or something like, you know, everybody wants to do that. So I'd like us to get some rules on that because, you know, I kind of like asking for the motion. I'd like to know your feelings about that too. Because, you know, we've done it. We've done it three different ways. One, two, three, four, down the line, who wants this one? And lately, we've just been asking for a motion. And I can think of one in particular where, you know, I'm not sure who got it out first. I don't think it worked right. Doesn't matter. We've got to have a good scenario on that one too, so I want that in here. That's been difficult on me and how we do that. So let me finish this and then I'll recognize you. Once you all are recognized to speak, we're going to go down the line and everybody else gets a chance to speak before we go back to the person that, first of all, is everybody good on that one? Any comments on that? Then I'll take your comment on that. So whoever gets to talk first holds all their, you know, they speak for their two minutes, three minutes, five minutes, whatever we decide. Then we go on down and let everybody else have their say. And if they want to go back again, until all council members desire to speak have been allowed to do so. So I like that. You all like that? Any comments on that one? Questions? What were you about to say?
I was just about to say, it just seems so scripted and, you know, sometimes you're making a motion for something you don't even agree with. You're making a motion and then you voted against it. To me, that is just not the democratic way. I'm just one person. Everybody else is fine with it, so just do it that way if that's what you like.
No, I was saying, I like asking for the motion. So I'm not asking you to make a motion on anything that you wouldn't want to make a motion on.
I thought you were saying that-
I don't understand what Dee Dee is saying. If you said, "Make a motion on something you don't agree with," is that what you were saying?
When it was scripted to the extent, when you took office, I know it was, and it continued that way for a long time. You take this one, Sandra, you take that one. You take that, you take this one.
It was like that before.
And it's almost as if-
It was like that before.
It was that way before.
I know it was. And I think that's kind of where it was brought in. But you don't have to keep doing the same thing that somebody else did just because they did it. You know, now if it works, it's, it works. And if the majority agrees with it, that's fine.
There was never a time where if I said, "Do you want number three?" You'd say, "No, I want number four." And I'd say, "Okay." You know, that never happened. I don't think anybody ever had to make a motion on something they didn't want to. But my point was, how do you want it to happen in the future? Do you want me, you don't want me assigning what you're going to make a motion on because it'd be one you didn't agree with? I like just saying, who would like to make a motion that we? Just, please, go ahead.
Just for a little background history on that particular item. Councilmember Donald Gillum is the one that wanted that put in place when Mayor Head was mayor. Because Mr. Gillum felt like all council members didn't get an opportunity to make motions at that time. So he wanted those assigned to council members so that everyone got an opportunity to make a motion. So that's how that became the procedure of the West Point City Council.
And it's great to have that history. So what that tells me is that there was something that made him feel like he didn't get his opportunity to make, although I can't imagine that, as outspoken as Donald was, is, he didn't get an opportunity to have his two cents worth. Anyone that knows Donald would kind of look sideways at that. But if that's the way it was and that's why it got put in place, fine. Is that what we need today? I don't know if anybody feels like they can't make a motion if they aren't assigned one. I don't anticipate any other meetings where you're told which motions we're going to make. And to me, it's, to me, it's, do we not have sense enough to operate in a meeting and make a motion?
I can assure you, Donald was not silent. I think that that was brought in place for some others that he felt was voiceless. But Donald got his share of whatever.
Well, that sounds more like Donald.
Yeah, it was.
Why don't we let the mayor assign the ones that he wants us to make the motion? And if you don't want that one, you can just say, "I don't want that one. Can I have another one?"
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I mean, I never had a problem with, "Dorian, can you do number two, number one, and number three?" But if it's what I don't want, I just say, "I don't want it."
Most of the things that we do are almost unanimous, votes.
Yeah.
Except occasional abstention or objection by one. But most of the things that we do are unanimous. So it's not really like anything, a lot of things are very controversial.
Well, I'll be happy, I'll be happy-
It was interesting about the comment about people not wanting to dedicate the time because this is my 21st year on the council, so I can assure you, I don't mind dedicating the time.
A 10-minute meeting over 24 years, you know. I mean, maybe, if anything, if this will address what we just experienced, it may be worth it if we're going. Now, the Snide comments, the Snide, it's supposed to be more, yeah. If it will address it, then.
Is that the whistle?
Go ahead.
Oh, that train. I think this is important to y'all. It's certainly important to me because I try to be as fair as I can be on everything. I don't want to slide anybody and cut anybody off. I've let people talk way more than, and y'all, you know, y'all know that, than we should because I want to give everybody their fair share. But I want everybody to have input as well. So that answers my question. I will continue to assign the motions. Okay. And to the next paragraph, point of order. Y'all are good with calling point of order. That's the only acceptable interruption to somebody is point of order. If you feel like somebody is violating the rules and the presenting officer determined the point of order, great. If the point of order is in order, until the question of order is determined, the council member must speak speaking unless permitted to explain. If the council member is determined to be in order, he or she may proceed. So like, dislike, comment?
How would you go about determining it?
Well, if a council member, any council member feels like another council member is out of line in what they're saying, they'll call point of order. And then I guess it's up to me to determine if the point of order is in order. Until the question of order is determined, the council member must cease speaking until permission, unless permitted to explain. If the council member is determined in order, he or she may proceed. So if point of order is called and the person calling point of order say, "This is not a topic, this is whatever," then we'll determine if that's on point or not and proceed or not proceed. Good?
So the person that says point of order, calls for point of order, has to say what they feel like is justified.
Is that what y'all want?
This is off the subject. This is, I'm not recommending that, but I'm just trying to understand.
I think a point of order is, you immediately get your attention. Say, "Point of order," and you describe what the fraction is. And then that's all you get to say. And then you get to determine whether or not the council member that was speaking is, continue on with the explanation of why she or she is going to talk about that or-
My name is Dee.
The point is made.
Can I split the baby? Yeah, no, I'm good. I'm good. Y'all, just, are y'all good? Is that, is that good to everybody? Good? Good? You can call for it. Yeah, so you can call for it. Are you good with it?
I'm not good with all of this, so just go on. And I'm not about trying to prolong this meeting. I've said what I think about it. I don't think it's moving in the right direction. And, you know, I realize that I have one vote.
Council members should avoid indulging in personalities, using inappropriate or offensive language, smearing, defaming, or vilifying motives of other council members or city staff, or the use of city language that holds other city council members up to contempt. We're all good with that? If council members' integrity or motives are questioned and maligned, he or she may have the right to deliver speech of personal privilege, three-minute limit.
So does that mean, Mayor?
Yes.
Does that mean that this is in addition to, correct?
I would think so. And I would think they would say, "I would like to, I feel my, I've been maligned and I want to, personal privilege, say why." But it needs to be about why, I don't think it needs to be about whatever the issue was. I think it needs to be about motives. You know, if somebody says your motives are to gain financially off something we're voting on, then you need to stay on that topic, not, right?
Yeah.
You know, integrity, same way if your integrity is maligned. Yes.
I guess it's a question for Ayah. Ayah, why don't we use the Robert Rules of Order?
It's certainly something that the council could adopt to use. If you've ever looked at Robert's Rules of Order, you need a parliamentarian at every meeting to assure that the council is following those rules. They are very detailed and in-depth rules and procedure for anybody to follow. And it's not just council. This is, any organizational body can follow Robert's Rules of Order, so.
So did any of this material come out of Robert's Rules of Order? Or did this actually come from different-
It could, it could be.
Cities.
But this came from reviewing other cities' rules of decorum and debate. It didn't come, none of this was written directly from Robert's Rules of Order. It was written from what other cities are using.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to ask a question.
Okay.
Mayor, do you have any way of knowing how many cities have something like this? And who they, what cities and why it came into play? You know, sometimes something like this comes about as a, I think this is what it is and like we've heard expressed here today. And sometimes it's even worse, you know, it's because somebody's got in the eye or somebody threatened somebody.
I'm going to ask you.
You have any way, any idea about that?
I don't have any statistics on the number of cities or, you know, I don't have any information on that.
I'm going to ask Jason.
Ask Jason.
What rules they do in Atlanta.
Not that I think we need to operate like Atlanta does, but it would be interesting.
No, just another opinion.
Big cities probably have this. I don't know, but cities of 3,500 often have a need to.
Okay, I'd like to hear from everybody on how you'd like to proceed with this, what you want to see come out of this and how you want to move forward as it's presented. Do you want to change it? Do you want to work on it some more? You have three minutes.
So, Mr. Mayor, you're going to put in some additional comments about making motions, and I have no other objections on this.
I'm going to read over it again, but as of right now, I really don't have any objections.
Okay.
I would like to compare some of these to Robert's Rules of Order.
Okay. Comment?
I'd like to see what we're working on. We're going to go, I'm looking for adopting something other than what we do now.
Okay.
I think we do nothing now until I'm ready to give this a try immediately.
I'm sorry, say that again.
I said, "I don't think we have much Rules of Order right now." So I'm ready to give this a try immediately.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying, yeah. Yeah.
On a temporary basis, if it doesn't work, we can modify or we can can it all together.
I'm sorry. Okay, all right. All right. So any other questions, comments from anybody regarding this?
I do have a question. If another council member was doing this, if you was writing this or writing this up, how many minutes, I mean, if you had to limit the minutes, how many minutes would you say? I mean, if you're not in agreement with three, how many minutes would you say that you would, if you were speaking? Would you say you need five, 10, 15, two, one? I mean, if you was writing this up, not the person that wrote it up, but you as a council member, how many minutes would you put on here?
I have already said I would not want to put a limit on it because each situation is different. I mean, sometimes you don't have anything you want to say. You need zero seconds. Sometimes you need a minute. Sometimes, I can't imagine that any one person would ever need 10 to 15 minutes, but, you know.
COVID?
I mean, three minutes is fine.
You know what that was. Don't even try to go all the way. Don't try to cover up for it.
All right. Any other comments? Comments? Okay. Well, last one. Do you want to see this on the business meeting agenda or do you want to work on it some more?
I'd like to see it on the business agenda.
I mean, what other work would we do on it?
Do you want to vote here and there on this Monday?
Well, you asked me if I want- If I want to see.
Do you want to see, do you want to see it on the April eleventh for a vote?
What other work would we do on it if we was going to do some work? Anybody have some suggestion they want us to add to it, Sandra said she wanted us to look into the Robert Rules.
I mean, I'm going to do that on my own, I've got a book, I got the book at home, so I'm going to do some reading and.
What other work would we do on it if we was going to do some work on it?
By city staff.
Well, I think in in that it was just introduced tonight, and again, going back to something I've said many times, it's always good when you introduce an idea for the first time to give it some time, to settle in, to have the people time to do their own research as you are going to do. And I'm sure I will be doing something too, and then come back together and discuss whatever else we might want to add to what's been said tonight. If it's a consideration that we go with Robert's Rules of Order, now is the time to do it instead of putting this in place. And we can always change it if we want to, we can always go back to three meetings if we decide to. But the reality is, we know that once it's in place, it's in place, you know, can be changed? Is it likely to be? Probably not.
Mr. Mayor, can I speak?
Yes.
I would, I I would like to see this on the agenda for our next meeting. I mean, I am going to do some more research and at the next meeting, if I decide I don't want to vote on it, I just won't vote on it.
Okay. Do you want this on the agenda for the next meeting?
Uh, if they put on the agenda, because I'm sure I could do my research. Before the next meeting is April the eleventh, right? Because I got, that's a lot of time.
Okay, all right. I think you were no and you were right now.
For our next meeting.
Our next meeting, okay, so, all right. So nothing else on this one, the items on the business meeting, Monday, April eleventh, two thousand twenty-two at five thirty P M, which will be an in-person meeting. Will be the proclamation for the Valley Haven and the Black History Month plaques and the meeting rules of decorum and debate. So that'll be our agenda for for that business meeting. Are there any announcements tonight?
I do not have an announcement, but I would like to thank everyone for their support for our virtual Black History program. Frankly, next year, we can meet in person. And thank you always to the West Point Police Department for being an awesome sponsor. You all were on television for several days and nights. And Jamaquez, Jamaquez Harris Scott, I'm probably not saying his name correctly, but everybody calls him Cash. He did an amazing job with putting it together. I did a post on social media saying that he put it together with videos from flip phones to iPhones, iPads, no pads, but he made it work and so hopefully we'll be able to come together next year in person.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, we're going to do council picture this year since we have a new member.
Yes, I think we could do that at the April eleven meeting if we think everybody's going to be here. We could do it that night.
Please remind us to dress appropriately.
Council group, we'll remind everybody, we'll make sure everybody can be.
Make sure everybody's going to be here, yeah.
That'd be, that's good, I thought about that, Mr. George.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Everybody wants to stay? All right.